Good evening and welcome to the Wednesday, November ninth, 2016, School Committee Meeting. If you could please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome for, and thank you for joining us this evening. The first thing I would like to do is say a hearty welcome back to Superintendent Benton. We are so happy and relieved to have you here with us tonight.
Thank you. I just wanted to take a moment, first of all, to thank the school committee for inviting me back. I was thinking when I walked in here this evening, it was two and a half years ago, that I stood in the front of this room and said, quoted Mr. Rogers, "It's good to be back in the neighborhood." And I think that quote is apparent, is apropos for this evening. I just want to say that I've been here for four days. I have to tell you that the welcome I have received from the staff and the community and the parents has been overwhelming, and I wish to thank everyone. You know, they say you can't go home again, but Wilmington, as I always knew, does things differently and has been incredibly welcoming to me. So I'm thrilled to be back. People who know me know that I have a special place in my heart for this school system, and I look forward to working with all of you over the next few months to get us a budget, get us some teacher negotiations, and most importantly for me is to create a sense of community that I know exists in all the buildings in the school. And I want to acknowledge all the administrators that are here tonight. You have a terrific team that I get to work with, so thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Welcome back. Next item of business this evening is our consent agenda, and the first item is the approval of minutes from our October twenty-sixth regular session. A motion to approve the, Mrs. Bonish, second. Mrs. Kane, okay, any discussion on, Mrs. Burns?
Just a minor correction pertaining to the Cuber field trip. I didn't abstain from the vote. It was a non-in favor, just to clarify that.
Just if we could make note. Any other discussion on the minutes of October twenty-sixth? Seeing no discussion, I'll ask for a motion to approve those minutes with that one change. All those in favor? Record show that we've got unanimous. You abstained? Okay, because you weren't there, okay. Sorry about that. All right, the next item is an out-of-state field trip to New York City for March, April twenty-seventeenth, and I believe this was a high school field trip. We had already approved, there was just a slight change to the schedule. Is there, could I have a motion to approve the field trip to New York? Okay, a second, Mrs. Bonish, thank you. All those in favor? Thank you. All right, and we have an out-of-state field trip to Orange Leaf in Derry, New Hampshire for November seventeenth. Could I have a motion to approve the field trip to Orange Leaf in Derry, as long as you bring me back some yoga? Okay, I saw it. Mrs. Burns is the motion, Mr. Mullis as the second. Is there any discussion going to Orange Leaf? No discussion, seeing no discussion, take a vote, all those in favor? And then we have some warrants, and I believe these, we can all vote on these three, so I'll take G four oh four, R two oh four, R two oh five, L eleven, twelve, and thirteen, and then food service, oh five, oh six, oh seven, oh eight, oh nine, ten, and eleven. Going to make a motion, Mrs. Bonish. Mrs. Burns, second. All those in favor of granting those? Thank you. Unanimous on those. Thank you. Next up, we have our report from our student representative, Ms. Ashley Bennett Kim.
Hi, so sorry about being a bit late. I just ran in from work. I got up at seven and got here as fast as I could. Alrighty, so good evening, everyone. Since I saw you last, quite a few things have been going on at the school. The class of 2017 had a fundraiser from October thirty-first to November first, where they used the app Shop Peru to raise funds. Not sure if I'm pronouncing that right, but that's what it was. There have also been MCAS retesting going on this week and last, beginning with English and moving on to math. The first, the last day of quarter one was November third, with the new quarter starting last Friday. This year is really just flying by. Seniors are also beginning to apply to colleges, as the first early action deadline was November first. So wish us luck, we need it. Tonight at six-thirty, there's a fundraiser, the Harlem Superstars versus the faculty in the gym. So that should be a huge turnout, as well as being a lot of fun. And next week, the class of 2017 is selling lanyards, and it should be a nice full week, considering this one is wicked short. That's all I have for you tonight, so thanks so much.
Great, thank you for being with us. Any questions? Great, thank you very much. Okay, under our next item, old business. I don't think we had any old, old business being carried over. Under new business, our first item is a conference support from our two attendees to the MASs and MASc conference. And we've got Mrs. Burns and Mr. Talbott. Anything to share about the conference?
Did you want to?
You can go first.
You sure you want to do that?
Again, it was a wonderful conference. A lot of the workshops stemmed from social-emotional supports and districts, and they were geared towards different type of resources with that. I want to start with, I think the quickest one is the delegate assembly. The resolution one, which dealt with foundation budget passed, as well as the social and emotional wellbeing of students. There was little tweaks, but both passed. The biggest one, as you know, I'm going to skip over resolution three that dealt with charter schools reform. They actually passed over this, since it was on the state ballot. But I thought I'd share that with the resolution two, which dealt with tax reform ballot question, of which we did not support because of where they were getting their funding source. That came up in, that was the heat of the discussion, actually, before it. They did tweak it a little bit and added, and other funding sources to it, because everyone did take, there was, because for the same reasons we rejected it. I did not vote in favor of it, because I still thought it was still a weak addition to something, and I didn't think it was going to make a huge impact. But that did pass in the end, just to let you know where that stood. The biggest thing I wanted to say, and I'm going to keep this short, is, and to take away is the, I partook in the MCAS two-point-oh workshop, which Deputy Commissioner Wolfson ran. There's a lot of things coming down the pipeline for this year with MCAS two-point-oh and the DESE. It still feels to me that it's, there's an agenda there that I don't think is actually actual, but that's my own opinion. They're talking about, a lot of questions surrounded the account, the new accountability and measures system. Since we're going into the Every Student Succeeds Act, that is going to change. So with that accountability, trying to figure out the new measures for these MCAS two-point-oh, that'll also filter in as to how we do our teacher evaluations and other assessments within the district. So that's still in the progress, and they're still investigating that. There has been some talk about creating a grade eleven MCAS two-point-oh assessment, which came up with a little pushback from the body because of, it's a, you know, eleventh grade. There's SATs, there's other assessments for college, you know, for college prep to get into. So that may be something to keep on the radar. And again, technology in the rural areas of Western Mass is still a concern, of which they couldn't address really effectively, in my opinion. But is also, the practice test for this, the newer test will be coming out sometime in January. So it'll give a little insight as to what students will be taking this spring. And that's pretty much, I'm going to delve into it a little further. The Board of Education should be meeting, I think, this week or next week to discuss further initiatives surrounding this MCAS two-point-oh and how it's going to roll out for districts. So that's pretty much in a nutshell.
Thank you. Mr. Talbott?
So this was my first time going, so a lot of it was just informational stuff that I didn't know a lot about. So I don't really think I need to get into the details of that. There were some very interesting, you know, discussions about Western Mass and how they deal with their situations out there with funding, getting it from the state, and things like that, that I never really realized, that they, the issues that they go through out there. And so, and then learned about some different teaching tools that they teach in the trade schools with a program called Plickers. It's, it's, it's a, it's, you hold up a barcode type thing with your answer. You do it in a certain way, and then the teacher will come by and scan it. And then, instead of kids yelling out that they can go and they can do it, and they can show real time, like how they, on a, on a screen showing how it, they answered like A, B, C, or D, and who was right and, you know, but not who was wrong. I mean, just showing how many kids, eighty percent, ten percent, whatever. So I thought that was a pretty interesting way to, new teaching tool, to use that. You know, I learned a lot in the School of Law one oh one, just about the laws that go, you know, into, into our body here. And there was, you know, also an interesting thing about a new position, at least I've never heard of, is a records access officer for when our records get requested, that there's actually a person that goes in, redacts. I know some that we had to deal with recently, unfortunately. But that it's something of a new position title, that, that a lot of schools are now pointing somebody to be able to handle this one issue.
Excuse me for one sec. I'm going to be bringing that up at the December meeting. We now have to have a person assigned to do that job.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
So it was just interesting to hear, because like I said, what we've dealt with. So that there's actually a job for, you know, needed for that now. And, you know, went into, you know, other classes, you know, other panels discussing MCAS, and, you know, whether that's, you know, that's better than the other choices that we have, and, and just discussing that. It was, it was all pretty interesting, and I'm glad I went and got a lot of information that, you know, I can use, so.
Great, thank you. You took care of your orientation requirement, too.
Yes, yeah.
Excellent.
And I'd like to thank MJ for all her guidance and help, that she snaked through the process, yeah.
And all your new friends.
Can I, can I ask a quick question with regards to the Resource Information Officer? Is that going to be an unfunded mandate, or is that, is that something that's potentially impacted?
Absolutely is. We will fund it, and I have, I've already spoken with Paula about a way that we can do it in person, that we can do it. So I'll be bringing a proposal to the committee in December.
Is there a deadline that we have to do this by, is the other question?
January first, I think, yeah.
So we have so much time. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Talbott or Mrs. Burns on the conference? Mrs. Kane?
How is Liz Walker?
She's my new best friend. I have to say, I just, I won't go in, but she talked about, as you know, she's a reverend now. Her church is in Roxbury, and her parishioners are of all different, you know, economically challenged areas. She talked about, she spoke about, again, the social and emotional, but it's about having grace and empathy and getting the stories. So too many times, people look at the reaction and, and don't know where, but they don't know where that comes from. And once you get that story, then you know how to support and teach kids to be better and well-rounded individuals, to start learning about, you know, working against adversity and finding their own way. And that was something that was touched upon throughout the conference, actually, because she spoke the first night. So that was, I love, she's so tall. I mean, but she's just, but she's just so gracious. She's got such a wonderful, warm body language, you know, very welcoming. She's fantastic, and fantastic to listen to. I'm glad they brought her back this year.
Thanks, MJ.
Absolutely.
All right, and our next item is a one-to-one Chromebooks initiative update.
This evening, I'm pleased to have Julie Kelly here with us this evening. Julie is a high school technology integration specialist, and Julie worked along with a team that she'll tell you about this past summer to implement the one-to-one Chrome program. And I just want to say, coming in at this time of the year, it was fabulous to hear how smoothly it went. And we've already talked about moving forward some exciting possibilities for training for staff in summer tech camp.
Thank you for having me come. I thought I'd start just very briefly with Chromebook History one oh one here in Wilmington. When I, when the building opened, we started with seven Chromebook carts here at the high school. We have since added four at the middle school, two each at the North and West, and two each at the Shoshine and Woburn Street. So the only problem with the carts is that they're used so much that there's just not enough Chromebooks for the amount of people who want to use them all the time. So before we even started, I worked very closely with Neil Ellis and the whole team. Dana Burnham and Tom and Jared, everyone was involved in the process. Even Paul came and visited some schools with us. We went to visit other schools and see what they did, and especially what mistakes they made, and find out where we could possibly avoid some issues. We decided on the Chromebooks partly because of cost. They are $240 when you include the Google Chrome Management License. So, you know, we visited a school that used MacBooks, which is great, except at $1,400 each student. That's a lot for parents to have to do. And it was a lot more work on the part of the technology team, because you have to install programs and uninstall programs when they go back to students because of licenses. We are, Chromebooks run Chrome, and we are Google App School, so everything that we use will run on it. And we use the Google Management License just to be able to distribute apps and to be able to ping out Chromebook if it gets lost or stolen, which thankfully we have not had here. But in the case that a student can't find it, we can ping it, we can find it for them. So having that is really a great bonus to it, but we'll, I'll show you a little bit. So they can be purchased through Dell. You can purchase them on your own also, though. We have the specs up on the website. The price was negotiated with Neil. He got Dell down to, I think the Chromebook itself was one-ten, and then it was the thirty-dollar, oh, sorry, two-ten, and then the thirty-dollar Management License, which is a Google price. That one's not negotiable. We do offer free and reduced lunch, different policies for that, for students who can't afford it. Anyone can apply for hardship scholarship also, so that everyone had the option to have one. If students wanted to bring their MacBook, that's fine also. They just bring it to the library. I set them up on the wireless. And so they can also bring their own device. But it's easier for troubleshooting, if the majority of the students have the same device, that teachers know what to do with it when there's something that's not working. So our planning year was last year. That's when we went and did site visits to gather all the information. We did a district-wide digital learning plan and distributed that. We updated the school acceptable use policy, the social media policy, and the electronic device policies, so that they would all align with students having devices in their hand all at the same time. We offered professional development through WUs in the past, so teachers would come. They'd be able to get credit for that after school. We did Fall Information Night last year for Google Apps, just a general Google Apps information night. And then in the spring, we did two Chromebook information nights. So Neil did a prezi all about all of the financial stuff, and I did a presentation with all the fun Google stuff. So that was a fun couple of nights to have. They distributed the information through the winter report cards, the paper, the forms, and everything. And then everything was available to purchase online with options to get it on your own. So that's how that, that was pretty much what last year looked like, all of the planning, and then for the summer distribution. So this year, we had, in August, two days where the students could bring in their Chromebook to the West. The entire team was there to be able to get them all set up on the wireless and get the Chrome Management installed and get everything ready to go, so that the first day of school, they came in and everything was ready. There were a few that couldn't make it that day. I was at band camp that week, so I wasn't there either. But the, they just, there were maybe thirty students who didn't get to have it done over the summer. We did it two night, two days in a row. So the plan is for this summer, do it one day one week and one day the next week, so that if people are on vacation. So they would bring it the first week of school. They just brought it to my desk. I set them up on the wireless and got them all set. Then we did, anytime that anyone has a problem with it, they just bring it to me in the library. We have support there. I also have a student technology team. We have not, we've had three screens broken, but that's, you know, they put them in their backpack and they throw them in their locker. But, you know, Dell will send, they call Dell, they send them a box, they put it back in, send it off, and they fix it. We also have some parts available in the library, if that's not an option. In the, this year, we just started during the I block. We have a digital citizenship course that all ninth graders are going to, it's a sixth lesson course that all ninth graders will go through. It'll end in January. So first half of the year, all ninth graders will complete a digital citizenship course during our I block. It's every other white day for them, so that, you know, they still can go get extra help. They can make up work with their teachers. We did a survey that we put out to all freshmen in, at the last week of September. So we sent it out to all freshmen. I think we had eighty-five responses, maybe, out of all of them, which was pretty good. And we're planning to redo the survey in May, so that we can see. It was all about how often are you using it in class, what are you using it for? Are you using it for educational reasons? Are you using it for games? What are you doing with it? So that we'll have that data again in May. So we can see, hopefully, there'll be more use as teachers are more comfortable with it. And that was a great thing about having the carts before we went to the, to the one-to-one, where the teachers were familiar with the Chromebooks. They're a little bit different. They're not exactly like a laptop. They look like a laptop. This is my Chromebook. And it, you know, presents and does everything just like it, but it is slightly different. There's no button. It's a trackpad, but it's a two-finger click. So there's a couple of little differences, and the teachers were able to use them in class before every student had one all day, every day. So that was a good thing. We are planning to do more WUs. We've already done, there are three of us who do after-school trainings, Tracy Jansen and Brenda Lamano also. And we do our very Google-centered, because that's mostly what we do. And we have several Chromebook-specific courses this fall. We're offering more in the spring. We're hoping that for the grades that are going to be coming up, that we'll be able to do specific during CIT time, grade-specific help for using Chromebooks for the teachers that will all of a sudden have them in their classes next year. We're also planning a summertime student, like tech camp. So the kids who will have it, so next year, it'll be eighth graders and ninth graders who will be getting their new Chromebooks. So we're hoping to do a week-long summer tech camp, so that they'll come in, they'll do some fun activities with them. They'll have them in their hands already, and they'll be more comfortable with them when they first start. So the overall plan, so this year, we did grade nine only, kind of ease in, figure out what the kinks are. Next year, for year two, we're planning on grade incoming, grade eight and nine. So there'll be two more grades next year. Eight, nine, and ten will all have Chromebooks in hand. The following year will be grade seven and eight, so we'll have seven through eleven altogether. And then year four, we add six and seven. So by 2020, we'll have grade six through twelve with Chromebooks in hand.
Do you have any questions? Great, any questions?
What's the lifespan of the Chromebook? What is it? How long does it meant to last?
I'm not exactly sure. We haven't had any, we've had some specific device problems with one brand that we purchased originally at the high school. I have a Chromebook I've had almost since it came out, and my kids use it all the time. It gets banged around, and it's at least three years old, I think.
So would you, if a freshman buys one?
They should be good for the whole time.
For yours?
Yep, yep. The, the ones that the students purchase are very sturdy. The hinge is not like, it, they're, I can't say indestructible, because we have had three screens broken. But they're very sturdy. I believe they were waterproof, ninety-nine percent sure. We don't tell the kids that, because we don't want them to test it. But they, they have been, the Dell eleven is very, it's known for being super sturdy, which is why we picked that one, when we went with it.
Thank you.
Yes?
Actually, it's water-resistant.
Yes, thank you. Water-resistant.
I guess one of my questions is, is that are all BYOD, Bring Your Own Device, required to have virus protection on it? Does every, like, before it goes on the network here, is it just Wi-Fi?
It is just Wi-Fi. We don't require any specific, the Chromebooks don't have anything specific on them, because they only run Chrome. Nothing downloads. Almost, with the exception of maybe three that I've seen, they all have Chromebooks of various types, if they're not the one that we suggested.
Well, yeah, and that's why I said Bring Your Own Device, because you said that people bring an app, a Mac, or another Dell.
We've only seen a couple, but they're not required to have anything specific.
But are they required to at least have something?
That I don't know. I'd have to check with Anne Maria on that one.
Mrs. Kane?
One of the things, reasons we were told we, we should, you know, support this was that when it came time for the testing, they would, the children who were being tested would have their Chromebooks, because it has to be on a Chromebook or some other device. When you played that list of which, you know, the ninth grade and the eighth grade and the seventh grade, is that now current that they will all have, whoever needs to take this test next year? If there is, if, if we get that test next year?
Right. I don't know what grades.
So actually, the requirement is this year that all fourth through eighth graders take the MCAS two-point-oh on a computer. So if you recall the first slide that Julie showed with the carts, we'll be using those carts, those Chromebooks for all students in fourth through eighth. They have extended the timeline of how, normally, there was a two-week window to do administering of the MCAS test. It's much longer, because we're going to have to share. But we're all set up for it. Neil had it all taken care of before he left, making sure that all the Chromebooks will, will work for the MCAS two-point-oh. But, you know, Tom talked about something really seriously wrong with the state of Massachusetts, and it's, it's the western states that don't have the, they don't even have Wi-Fi. So it's, it's a real issue for lots of students in the western part.
It's like, they don't even have the opportunity to even have internet. Like, it's, it's dial-up for them. It's, it's pretty bad outside.
So it's, it's going to be interesting to see what happens with this test this year. We're all going to be held harmless, but the other problem with the MCAS, new MCAS MJ was referring to, is they're not ready yet. That's the problem. I mean, they're rushing it to get ready, so we're going to, we're going to have some issues. What, what I think is most exciting about this program, this one-to-one program, is our students use more technology than I think a lot of us do. And we are now going to be integrating it right into the curriculum, so that we will be, they will be able to use that tool instead of a textbook. So for example, the purchase of your science, new science program is really electronic. So there's not a textbook. They'll be using their Google Chromebook to access the curriculum. And that's a way for them to be able to do it from wherever that they're going to be. You invested last year in some new curriculum that we'll talk about as we go on through the year. The piece that I had talked with Julie about this week is, to me, the most important part of this project in order for it to be successful is the teachers have to be invested in it. The only way they can be invested in it is if we provide training. So we are going to work with Mr. Gallagher to incorporate training for all of the freshman teachers for the remainder CIT days this year, so that they can be working together and, as, you know, they learn, the students learn. And that's why I think this summer, it's going to be very important for us to train the eighth and ninth grade, eighth grade teachers, so that they are not walking into the classroom on the first day with a Chromebook as their students are. And I think that it will, it will really provide for some more exciting, interactive learning. We've talked a lot about this new high school being designed for project-based learning, and the Chrome- and the Chromebooks is one tool that will get us there further. So, it's, it's, it's very exciting, but if you don't have the training for the staff, it's not gonna work. So, that's why I wanna focus our funds and time on funding.
So, glad to hear that, that was one of my next questions. The other one in conjunction with that is, are we going to be able to have enough time on those machines for the kids throughout the system? Because if they don't get trained on how to use it, that could be a huge problem.
That, so the January pilot test, all the students will, will take it on a Chromebook, so they will get practice.
Will they have had practice before then, during the year?
Yes, they have, during library class and during computer class, right now, they're using Chromebooks at the elementary schools, at least I know the north and the west. Only because I've been talking to Tracy about it, so they, they are using it. So, they are familiar, they're not using the Thing clients right now, they're only using the Chromebooks at the, at least at the intermediate schools.
Another reason why we have to get that library back in the middle of school, I'll just put a plug there. With that, and, let me see, I just wanted to comment that I love the idea of the ninth grade, the citizenship. I, I think that came from you already back with us.
That did not, I won't take credit for it.
I think that was Linda.
That's Linda.
Yes, I worked on that with Linda, and we, we're planning to hopefully implement the same thing with the eighth graders for next year, so that they'll have, so when they get the Chromebook, they'll have that class, so that they'll be prepared.
That's fantastic, thank you.
Mr. Bjork, I saw you in the...
I think that, I think this was spoken about when we first started talking about this, but I don't recall. Broken screens, and what, is there a cost to the student, or is there insurance for that?
They can purchase insurance. I don't know what the cost is if they don't have insurance and they send it back to Dell, but we did purchase extra parts. So, we have them, and I can replace them in the library, and I forget what the cost, specific cost. We have forms for each individual thing that might need to be replaced. So, we do have screens, outside cases, keyboards, all ready. So that when they do get, eventually get broken, because they're not indestructible, they'll be able to bring them in, and there is a form, I think the screens, the screen itself, I think, was the most expensive part. I wanna say that might be forty dollars or something like that, but that's just off the top of my head, I'm not sure, it's on, we have forms.
We can get that information.
Yeah.
That's great, Mrs. Burns?
I just had a quick question for Superintendent Benton, with regards to professional development, which I think this is, it's perfect and in line with where we need to be, especially with the changes coming up this spring. I know that some of the, that I was told, I believe, that some of the professional development this year was gonna surround universal design learning, learning design? Is it UL or UDL? Thank you, is that still gonna take place, or is that, I'd like to see, I think this is a great opportunity to incorporate that piece, you know, another aspect into the technology piece.
That is continuing this year. I wanna make sure that the freshman teachers have specific, because the Wilmington New courses right now are voluntary. And some teachers, because we all have another life outside of the, the school, you know, haven't been able to participate, I wanna make sure that every teacher is trained and provided with the support, so they can move forward.
Very good, thank you.
And during CIT time, it's a great time, because the math teachers are gonna use the Chromebooks differently than the social studies teachers. So, it'd be great to have them by subject area.
That's great, thank you.
Mrs. Kane?
I forgot, I just wanted to ask, you mentioned that some of the parents didn't actually purchase the Chromebooks, that they were able to use their own devices?
They can.
Because I was wondering how many this, in this year's, the first class that we did, how many of the students did not do it, and what, what do you do in that case?
They all have a device, as far as I know, because if they needed one, we got one for them. If they forget, we do have some extras in the library, so if they, you know, don't have it that day, or we had a screen that got sent out, so that child came and borrowed a Chromebook every day for, until it came back. But, I don't know what the actual numbers are, I can find out though, for who purchased, like, how many purchased, and then... But, everybody does have a keyboarded device at school during the day.
Could I just segue off of Mrs. Kane's question? I know that, my concern is going with the testing again, sorry, this is gonna be my new, the one. I know that we got the Chromebooks, because it seemed to be the one that was most compatible with what the state assessment was being, it was the more reliable. Is there any concern with regards to, since we've gone through the technology piece before, with students having something other than a Chromebook for the assessment?
I don't believe so.
I know they're still doing paper tests in some...
They all have to use the Chromebook for the, for the testing.
Yeah, and we have plenty.
Okay, perfect.
Available for, especially when freshmen, but we, we have plenty in district, and there are plans for, you know, when the fourth graders are doing the test, we're moving the carts over there, so they'll have plenty to use.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Mrs. Bonish?
So, I just have a question about the cost, you said that Neil got the cost from Dell. Is that, obviously, you guys are gonna be doing this every year, so someone will have to work with Dell to...
Yes.
You know, 'cause this is gonna happen every year, so someone, okay, so I'm just wondering, who does that?
I, I believe the Director of Technology would be doing that, I don't know, I don't know if she's started it yet or not.
Okay, and then the other thing is, so in year, in your year four, which is, I guess, in two years, so, grade six, to Nanny's point, that might not last through twelfth grade, right?
It might not.
That's six years.
That, that is a long time, especially for a portable device that you're putting in your backpack or your locker. But, we felt with the two-hundred-and-forty-dollar price, that if you have to replace it, you're free.
Okay, I was just wondering about that.
Like a phone.
That's right. Except I don't replace them as often as my children think we should.
Great, any other questions, comments, concerns?
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you very much, that was very helpful.
Okay, our next item, we have the fiscal year sixteen, end-of-year report, and I believe this is just informational. Mr. Rogiro shared for us, is there any points that we ought to be aware of?
I just wanna acknowledge the work that Mr. Rogiro put into this. And, this is every business director's nightmare, and Jackie Raffey and Paul Rogiro have spent hours putting this together, and this is some, one of these, you know, mandate, unmandated, unfunded projects that really takes a lot of time, and I wanna publicly thank both of them for their work.
Thank you very much, any, Mrs. Kane?
I'll just say, I don't know how they read it, it's so tiny, I had to give up. I had a little, a little one of those, what is this? It's a ton of work, thank you so much, Paul.
Great, any other comments or questions now?
So, every year, the School Department is required to present a district and school improvement plan to the school committee. And, this year, we are working off of the strategic plan that you approved a couple of years ago. So, Sean Gallagher, Assistant Superintendent, is gonna go through the, review the district improvement plan, and then we have principals and assistant principals here tonight, thank you all for giving up a night with your families to come here. I think some of them were relieved that they could be here instead of out on the basketball court down the hall. Normally, some of them volunteer for that, for that event. But, a, a school improvement plan and the district improvement plan is really a document that is used to, to guide our work throughout the school year. And Sean, having just joined us a few months ago, is already up to speed and on his way, so.
All right, well, thank you very much. I'd also like to thank everybody, and I thank Superintendent Benton for a smooth transition the last few days. And also thank Paul for all his hard work. I learned a lot about binders in the last few days, so, it's been great. So, I'm just gonna go through, you have, I think, the detailed plans for all the schools. So, I'm just gonna give an overview, and a lot of the information that I'm gonna talk about quickly, I believe the principals will, will be up here and give you a little bit more detail. But, as, as we all know, I, I think the district improvement plan goal one is closing the achievement gap, and that's not only in Wilmington, but throughout the Commonwealth. It's a challenge, I think, for all school districts. So, for us, I think, some of the key, key points that we've been doing since the, the summer is working with Jen White, one of our experts in looking at data analysis and item analysis, as we look at our programming and how we're delivering education, especially to our at-risk students, to give us more of a focal point, which helps us analyze not only the instructional delivery, but also some of the programming that's going on into our schools. And our principals and administration has been great at kinda looking at a lot of the trends and really enhancing some of the things that are working well, and kinda tweaking some of the things that have been a challenge for that goal. The other piece, we believe, is the curriculum enhancement, and then also, as Superintendent Benton said, professional development is key. So, if we're looking at differentiated instruction, we're looking at reluctant learning, we're looking at the social-emotional challenges, it's really important to give our teachers some strategies, working with all students, but especially the at-risk population as we begin to mainstream. District improvement goal two, and this is something I firmly believe in, one hundred percent, is developing leadership capacity, but also the instructional leadership capacity. We've kinda taken a big, you know, as the Assistant Superintendent this year, and coming in and kinda looking at how things were done, just tweaking things a little bit. So, instead of having a big group of the instructional leaders, from the CTLs to the principals, secondary principals, we've kinda broken up that group, have a smaller group, really developing our own professional learning community, identifying the five best instructional practices, looking at twenty-first century learning together, and really kinda developing those learning walks, where we're going into each building and looking at some great instructional practices. And then brainstorming after, and kinda seeing the things that we saw, that we felt were some great instructional practices, and then some areas of suggestions or recommendations with each other. I think that does two things, one, we're all talking the common language of what we're looking for, and two, it gives us an opportunity as district leaders, but also administrators throughout the district, to really go into these classrooms and see some great instructional practices going on. So, I think that's been a great benefit, and it's really train-the-trainer model, where you develop within district expertise, that then those teachers become the models of, for other teachers. And I think that that capacity is really important for this district, and I think we're on our way. As we look at the district improvement plan three, and we're looking at safer and supportive schools, and this is a lot of the work, you know, that has been done through the inclusion task force, kinda looking at meeting the needs of all students, and improving our inclusionary practices. So, I think we ask teachers to do a lot, day in and day out, and we're asking teachers to, to kinda develop more of a toolbox in dealing with the inclusive practices and working with our at-risk students, closing the achievement gap. And I think that that's gonna be one of our focuses, not only on the technology piece, but to provide our teachers with some key professional development. The other piece that I think is also really, really important is, and not because we presented the D cap, but really looking at those D cap accommodations. When a student isn't successful, you know, and not making effective progress, what are some of the accommodations that we're doing in the mainstream, within the classroom, to support those students and teachers? And I think that that's a really important aspect, you know, before we start looking at, you know, either special education or learning disabilities, like, what are we doing within the class? Having professional development and really bringing in the use of technology into the classroom's gonna help. It's gonna start changing how we're delivering education and how our students are receiving a lot of the instruction. And I think the last key to that is really monitoring the effectiveness and, and progress of a lot of the different programming that we have on, and really going all the way back to, goal one is analyzing the data, especially for students that are not making effective progress, and then really looking at why. I think that's an important piece of our district improvement plan. Four, and I think this is, I think, always a challenge, I think, for all districts, it's enhancing communication and collaboration with the families, parents, and students. I think we have, I think it was just talked about earlier, we have a lot of ways of communicating with people now, but I think effective communication's the, the important aspect. Especially if, you know, we're sending out messages, and, and we all know some of the downfalls of social media and how that can... So, I think controlling a message and controlling the communication is a key aspect. I think effective use of technology, this district, I think, really has some great aspects in place for that. I think it's still the continuation, when you're bringing people, you're talking to all stakeholders, how our strategic plan was built over the last few years. I think the outreach to local businesses is a key factor for enhancing the communication and collaboration with, in the Wilmington community, and from speaking with Superintendent Benton, there's a lot of pride in this community, and I think that's gonna be one of the, the key aspects, is bringing the Wilmington pride back. You know, I was a former coach, and we just have to come up here, and they gave us Wilmington pride, 'cause we had a couple losses on the way home, so, that's, that's kinda, I think, what, what we're looking to do here. And then, I think, as you all know, there's a lot, there's been a lot of communities, a lot of outreach, and trying to get parent and community feedback on a lot of the different initiatives. The district improvement plan five, achieving operational effectiveness. I've had my first couple meetings with Mr. Rogiro and Superintendent Benton, and I'll tell you, I really believe that the process is transparent, all stakeholders are considered in this process. But, what's really important is making sure the expenditures from all the schools and all the program is equitable. I think that's a really important aspect, and something that Wilmington prides themselves on, is trying to create equity for all schools and all students throughout this budget process. And then, I really believe it's tying into student learning and the student learning goals for the district. And then, as always, and, and just knowing Paul these last few months, being reflective and effective on, you know, if we do need to change things, or if things, you know, weren't communicated well, it's going back and, and touching base with people. So, I think that that's, that's been an excellent process for me in transfer, you know, transferring into Wilmington public schools. The other piece is the instructional planning and improvement, professional learning communities alignment, especially working with standards and Jen White, working with teachers and really pulling out the standards. And really, what, what you're looking for, for that, is finding out, like, the needs-to-know versus the nice-to-knows. If you look at the Massachusetts curriculum, and you did everything that's in there, I think people graduate, I heard, would be age twenty-two, if you covered everything. And that's over, it's overwhelming for teachers, they get into that, you know, feeling they have to cover everything that's in the curriculum. But, I think it's really allowing teachers to have some autonomy over those standards, and pulling out what's essential versus, you know, what's the needs-to-know in this unit, or this skill set, versus the nice-to-knows. And, that's been really great, working with the admin team, and also the CTLs, and going around and just seeing the great work that teachers are doing. So, I think the instructional planning and improvement, we're on our way doing some great things. And then, I think structured curriculum review process needs to be built in too, where if things are changing, you know, adapting the curriculum to meet the needs of our children. And then, the last piece is the personalized learning, and this is that multi-tiered systems of support for students. But, it's also developing, I think, school culture for all kids, you know, where they're coming into a building and they feel like an adult knows them personally. You know, and one of the number-one reasons why, especially at the high school level, students drop out or become disenfranchised, the number-one question is, they felt like no adult cared about them while in school. And I know, under Lynda Peters... And I know under Linda Peters, she's starting that advisory program or built in some advisory time to really make that connection with the adults and I think that's key. And then that Naviance program that we have at the middle school and the high school where students identify their learning style, profile, and then also career options, their learn, their career options as they move throughout the high school. So I think that connection and that culture piece for the personalized learning is very, very important and then also the supports that are in place. So when a student is struggling, they know that the school is going to do everything in their power to support them personally but also the families. So that's kind of like the overview of the, you know, our area as a district and if you have any questions on that end. But we also have all the school improvement plans that I really believe fit into a lot of things that I just said.
Great. Any questions for Mr. Gallagher on the district improvement plan?
Sorry.
Mrs. Kane.
I just have a couple. One of the things I find fascinating is in this, at the beginning of the chart you gave us.
Yes.
The fact that we had two different sets of students who in their ELA, their math test, in the ELA in particular, I mean, got the exact same score, year one, one group, year two, a second group. Did you ever, no, you didn't, sorry. I don't know if anybody ever looked into that, but I'm just going to leave that out there. I don't know what the reason would be, but it's fascinating that that should happen. I think so.
We'll check it out.
Sure.
I don't know, but, and then on the third, your improvement goals here were different than the ones that you just gave us, I think. We had some extras on it, yeah?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that was the review. We kind of followed the same format that you had in the past, but that's kind of review of the strategic plan that's also built into the overall that we wanted to update.
One of the ones, this isn't for tonight, but at some point, I hope, maybe in January, we could go on this. When you're doing District Improvement Goal Number Three, Safe and Supportive Schools, the first action was about the Inclusion Task Force and Developing Recommendations and a Plan for Improving Inclusionary Practices. Could we find out at that part of the year what we mean by inclusion? And I know you mentioned before we get to the special ed part of it, we, you're trying to take care of another part of it, something, but there's all kinds of aspects to that and I don't think we're aware as a school committee of what exactly we're talking about here.
So it's my understanding that there is a committee that is co-chaired by the Director of Student Services, Jen Mahon, and Principal Jeff Straznick this year. So why don't we bring them forward in January to do a presentation on their work to date?
That would be great. Thank you.
So are you, are you starting with high school or early childhood?
Um, we're starting with, I believe it's the Botwell and Wildwood.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I have both. Under, in the review piece, under District Improvement Goal Number Six, under the results piece, it says, it's the second sentence actually, five curriculum teams worked this summer to establish stage one, what's a UBD?
UBD, Universal Backwards Design.
Backwards?
Yes, so you, you design like your outcome.
Yep.
Like what you want to have, and then you, you work back, yes.
All righty.
So it's like, if we use, I'll use a sports analogy, which, but if you're going to score, if you want to score a touchdown.
Mm-hmm.
How are you going to get there? So you would put in, this is what we're going to do to get.
Gotcha. Okay. All right.
So whatever that skill set is, how, how are the kids are going to get there?
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Kane.
Under District Improvement Goal Number Four, under the actions, the second one, I think our superintendent is going to have enough to do that she shouldn't have to do that, so if everybody else agrees, it's up to you.
The first action?
The second one. The second one.
Enhance.
Doing the superintendent's.
Enhance communication?
Weekly blog posts, parents.
Oh, okay. Well, actually, I was hoping you were pointing to the first one. I'm going to.
The first one's good too.
I'm going to make a recommendation that the superintendent's district advisory council be put on hold for the year.
Excellent.
I just, I commend all of you for all the work that you're doing, but frankly, I think you're taking on too much. I, we're going to slow it down a little bit.
I agree.
So I will do the best I can with some of these requirements that were, you know, already established, but I'm not going to do them all, so I appreciate that.
No, definitely not. That's great. And the other, the last thing is, there's a proposal on that same page, District Improvement Goal Four, Proposal for Early College High School Initiative at the high school. How does that benefit us as a school system?
That, that is dual enrollment.
Yeah.
Right. So that's, so some of your students, one of the push for the college and career readiness aspect is dual enrollment. So students while they're attending high school have the opportunity to earn college credits.
But would they leave a year early? Would they be leaving us a year early?
No.
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 But we have a couple of students who've done it in the past. I know when I was here, we have some.
Yeah, with them, great. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the?
Oh, no, I was just going to say that the trade school, the, has a program with the UMass where they can take college credited courses to go ahead, so Shawshing Tech.
Any other questions, comments on the district improvement goal? No? Okay, moving right along.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher.
You're welcome.
So we have one of our newer members of the administrative team, Kristen Welsh, who's the new early childhood director for Botwell, and Charlotte King. I'm pleased to say officially, she had a name change a few weeks ago, she got married, so.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having us. I'd like to get started with the school year 2015-16 summary. Both the Botwell and the Wildwood Early Childhood Centers worked diligently and created a preschool report card that supports the OWL and the Common Core standards. This report card will be implemented beginning this year. In addition, at the Botwell School for the 2015-16 school year, the kindergarten team met regularly to identify tier three students using the AIMS-UB data during data team meetings, which was monthly. The teachers and support staff provided, discussed interventions and supports and designed and implemented these to help decrease the number of students that were in tier two, tier three. I can say that by the end of the school year, our tier three students decreased by 7.5% to 6.6 and there was a large increase of our students, went from 84% to 94% of students from tier two to tier one. So there was a, there was a nice increase there. Our 2016-17 school improvement goals, both, again, the Botwell and the Wildwood Early Childhood Centers are working together to create a report card rubric that will allow for fidelity and consistency when assessing the standards. And we have met regularly to date, at this point we're meeting monthly, and we have a pretty good, you know, pretty good starting point. And we do have a plan implemented for the school year so that that rubric can be completed by June of 2017. And the school improvement goal number two for the Botwell, at the Botwell, we are working on creating a consistent positive school climate by creating a rollout plan to implement PBIS, which is Positive Behavior Intervention Supports in the School. The plan is to implement, create a rollout for the 2017-18 implementation. PBIS is a school-wide approach to set a positive behavioral expectations for students. PBIS also supports the Responsive Classroom Approach, which is being implemented this year, both in the pre-K and kindergarten classrooms. Now, have it gone to Charlotte?
Thank you. Okay, so we have the joint goal with the Botwell, which I won't go through again with you, but one thing to add was just that the DESI and the Department of Early Education and Care put out a social emotional standards for pre-K and K last year and we were happy that we were able to quickly implement those and put them into the report card, so they made it in just the nick of time. So it's cutting edge. We also looked at our registration process. We did that with our joint school advisory committee with both schools, just to make sure that it was as parent-friendly as possible, that it was efficient as possible. We wanted to be very transparent with parents about the preschool lottery process, so we got some written guidelines in place which worked really well. And those will be implemented again this year. So we continue to work on that with parents and with our school advisory councils, whereas we're hoping to get more of the pieces online, so parents could do some things ahead of time. So we started discussions with that last year and we hope to continue with that this And the school improvement goals at the Wildwood will be the joint goal along with the Botwell to continue that important preschool, pre-K work and also to implement responsive classroom among the pre-K and kindergarten classrooms. I think you know that the, all of the staff was trained over the summer in a pretty comprehensive four-day training. For the staff that were not able to attend that, our educational assistants and some of the specialists were able to do a one-day training this fall that they all found very valuable. So now the entire schools, both schools are trained, so we're excited about that. Responsive Classroom, it's a research-based approach to teaching that focuses on not only the importance of academics but the links with social emotional. So it goes along with the district goals in that area.
Any questions for the early childhood?
Actually, I have a question and I'm new to this, so please forgive me, but what is the process that you go through when you have a brand-new teacher? You know, are they just giving them the keys to the room and saying, here you go? Or is there a mentoring program that goes along with that?
There is a mentoring program.
What does that kind of process go through?
Actually, I can answer it because it's for all, pre-K through 12. The state requires a mentoring program be put in place for all new teachers, so actually, I think, believe this year it was coordinated by Mrs. Zepolito and Mr. McMiniman. We do two days of workshops for other new teachers. We appoint them a mentor, another teacher in the building that can support them. There are meetings throughout the year that they must attend. Having to do with general topics as a new teacher, you know, report cards, conferences are coming up, how do you handle that? And we, we work with the new teachers on that. The next topic might have something to do with parent concerns around classroom behavior or how much homework to give. So the, the program is very comprehensive and it's actually, state requires a two-year program, unfunded by the way.
Any other questions for our early childhood centers? No? Okay, great. Thank you very much, ladies.
Thank you so much.
We appreciate the information.
It's, we're, Shawshin is coming down. I just want to point out to the people at home, and we will put these up online, acknowledge and thank all the parents and community members and teachers that serve on all these committees. It's all volunteer work and, and we appreciate the work that members of the community do to help support us. The next is to K for preschools. Mr. Straznick had a family event he had attended this evening, so we welcome Assistant Principal Mr. Ferio and Shawshin Principal.
Thank you. Thank you. Yep, so this is, these are some of my previous school advisory council members, Mr. Tibbetts, Mrs. Scaramoza, Mrs. Holly, myself, Mrs. Trembley, and Mrs. Lesnick. So thank them. So last year, these are just some of the school improvement goal summaries and we focused on two goals, a math and a reading goal with the same similar theme, which was to close the gap with students who were disabled versus students who are non-disabled in each category. So in math, we did indeed close the gap. I think that we went over some of the in-depth MCAS data in a previous, a previous meeting, but we did close the gap with math. And for ELA, we, we didn't close the gap. We did pretty much stay the same, but when you dive into the data, there is specific things that come up, like for our warning, our students that fall in the warning category, we had 14 students the previous year and this year we had five students. So when you look at the percentages, it doesn't always look like there was a change, but it was a change in that we focused on some struggling learners and we did see some improvements in that area. But the overall, the gap didn't decrease as much as we, we expected for ELA. Oops, I'm sorry. And we had an instructional support team goal last year, and instructional support team is a process that we follow when managing students and if problems are coming up academically or socially, to meet with the team of teachers to come up with recommendations for those students. And we had a really successful year last year with this. We piloted the online sort of program to keep the forums electronically and really create good goals to provide feedback to teachers and provide support for students. So we did that very successfully last year and this year we're just, we're sort of just continuing with it, even though it's not a goal because it's been, was such a success. So we're really excited about moving forward with, with this in the forums electronically. So this is my current school advisory council and I have, Mrs. Flaherty is a grade three teacher, Mrs. Patterson is our librarian, Mrs. Toff is a community member, Mrs. Nanawata is a parent, and Mrs. Johnson is also a parent. So they helped with, with some of the feedback on these goals. So I have three goals coming up and really the focus was on ELA and also on Reader's Workshop, the implementation of Reader's Workshop. So really, the first goal is to improve consistency and effectiveness of reading instruction with grades one and three teachers by increasing their knowledge base. So really, we're following all the things that we set forth that we expect teachers to do by the end of the year. We've broken those down into action steps and plans to help support those teachers. And our second goal is through data analysis and monitoring of student progress, we will increase reading fluency and comprehension with our struggling readers by showing growth for students in grids one and three. So instead of focusing just on closing that gap, we're really going to focus on those struggling readers. Now, although I don't have a math goal up here, as part of my own professional practice goal and student learning goal, it's the same goal but it's focusing on math. So although it's not a school improvement goal, we're still having, we're still focusing on it within the building. And lastly, our goal is to continue to establish a safe, respectful, and positive school environment by decreasing the amount of student behavior infractions. School-wide behaviors will decrease by June. So this is the PBIS model. This goes along with our strategic plan. We are meeting, we have 12 staff members, we meet every other week. We are really moving along with it. We're in the process of creating a behavior matrix. We created our school norms last year. And so we have a lot of buy-in so far from the staff and it's, it's looking like it's going to be a really positive thing for the school. That's what I have for now.
Great. Interesting. Mrs. Barnes, thank you.
Mrs. Kane, just a quick question with regards to the goal three. The outcome is that 50% of teachers will agree that behaviors have decreased. Is that going to be based on data as opposed to just?
So the 50%, I think that might be an old, we sort of took that out because we're working with, we're trying to work with, we're trying to figure out exactly what the percentage is going to be.
Okay.
Part of the PBIS team that meets, one of the goals within the action steps is to determine a database and how to collect that data.
Okay.
So that's sort of like a December goal for us, so it was tricky to put a number on it.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're working on it.
All right, so, but there will be?
We're trying to figure out what would be an appropriate number.
It will be measurable.
Measurable, thank you.
Yes, it will be measurable.
Thank you. Very good. Thank you.
Any others for Shawshin?
The only thing I want to say is I went to the fair this weekend and it was, or last weekend I should say, and it was, was really nice. Really good job.
Thank you. Yeah, it was nice.
That's nice. Thank you, Mr. Talbot. Okay. Ubrun Street.
Good evening. As Superintendent Benton said, Mr. Straznick was not able to make it tonight, so I'm filling in, doing the best I can with this. In terms of, oh, this is our council, that's okay, council members, Mr. Straznick, Amy Metcalf, teacher, Penny Barrier, a parent, and Amy Langenton, a parent. That was actually last year's group. In terms of summary, following extensive data. In terms of summary, following extensive data analysis of the 2016 MCAS test during our Summer Data Institute, we did see overall improvement in both our reading and math scores. We consistently performed higher than the state average in most ELA and math standards. We continue to see significant achievement gap in looking at the performance of our students with special needs and our students without special needs. This is true both in ELA math and with a larger gap in the math area. Our inclusion goal will continue this year as it is a multi-year goal. And we were able to create a set of belief statements with input from both staff and family members. So, that sort of summarizes last year. And going into 2016, '17, these are the members of our committee this year. Mr. Straznik, Lisa Bertolami is the co-chair, Amy Metcalf, teacher, Lil Mazzelli, the parent, Steve Morad, parent, and Heather Campanella, parent. Our first goal was around math. And students with disabilities, our goal would be to achieve proficiency in math by June 2017, as demonstrated by scores of 80% or higher on the math end-of-the-year benchmark. Overall, our ELA and math goals are both focusing on closing the achievement gap. And it's important to note that we want to close the gap, but we also want our students that are doing well to also achieve higher, so we're not losing focus on those. One important action step to achieve this goal is to create time in our master schedule that allows classroom teachers and specialists time to collaborate and plan with special ed teachers and reading specialists. Put a lot of time into that this year. Okay? Now, we did that. A goal for developing a common understanding of inclusionary practices is a multi-year goal. It's an important goal because it focuses not just on our students who are at a low-grade level, but those who are working on an above-grade level. It starts with solid tier-one instructions, such as what we are working on as a district, using our Envisions Math and Reader's Workshop programs. Our final goal is to develop common expectations for student behavior, which includes a tiered system of supports, such as what we use with reading and math. This work is starting with the creation of our school PBIS team this year. On our side of town, we've actually just started that process. They started on the other side of town, and we're just getting rolling now. We've just had our first meeting, where we'll be addressing some of the similar things that Mrs. King mentioned.
Thank you. Any questions for Wilburn Street, Mr. Ferio? No? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I find that a lot of the goals and work that we do, both at the North and the West, we talk a lot and communicate, we review data a lot, and we find some similar trends in the schools. And sometimes we have more targeted areas specifically for our school community. So, for the North, we can begin. And this was our school council for last year. Sheila Burke, who's our teacher, and also our assistant principal. Sally Lojek, also a teacher, and two of our parent reps, Heather Ings and Ellen Hounsel. And again, what the superintendent also referred to is, you know, they put in a lot of hours, and they come monthly, and we review budget, and we review the school improvement plan, and we go over curriculum and updates on what the teachers and the students are working on. So, we had some positive news with our achievement gap goal. Last year in ELA, we talked a lot about closing that gap between the high-needs and the non-high-need students, and we completed all of our action steps, a lot of which were around professional development, very targeted professional development on balanced literacy and guided reading. And although our goal was 5%, we did make some progress in the right direction, and we closed that gap by 3%. In the area of math, we had some great growth and some strong achievement. And our goal, again, was to reduce that gap by 5%. And we really showed some great strides with that full implementation of the Envisions Math program and the great support in the PD that was provided by the elementary math coordinator and the work that the teachers all did together in a cohesive movement. It really paid off for the students and the teachers at the North. And we were able to narrow the gap by 14%. So, we really exceeded our goal, and our results of accountability were very rewarding. So, this is this year's group. And again, Mrs. Burke is on board. We have two new fourth-grade parents. Hopefully, we'll get to keep them with us for two years. Jen Erickson and Tricia Xavier as parent reps. And focusing on goals, again, we will move forward with that literacy implementation. We also are working with Reader's Workshop, getting a lot of targeted professional development, and really trying to have students grow in their reading comprehension, and not necessarily just in a measure of MCAS as a way that we measure students' growth, but also on our reading comprehension testing with the BASS assessment, the Benchmark Assessment System. So, we are hoping to move a lot of our average, above-average and average students three or more levels on the Fountas and Pennels scale with all of our action steps that you saw listed there. In the area of school climate, we have a very similar goal here at the West. This is sort of a continuation from last year, working with our North leadership team and really trying to establish our core values as a building that really align with the district's core values and really lay a solid foundation for our PBIS that we also are just getting started. And we're going to hopefully learn a lot from the West as they go through their first year of meeting and developing their matrix, et cetera. So, we are hoping at the end of the year, when we have our teacher surveys, that our school culture and improvement in our staff morale and a shared common vision will be identified by the teachers. And lastly, we will continue with our math goal. And this year, after our first year of successful implementation, we're now in year two. And we need to recognize all of the tools that the Envisions program has and the comfort level now that the teachers have a year under their belt. And now, we really want to differentiate and scaffold for those students who need the assistance more and personalize their learning, as well as extend the learning for those students who are already meeting the standard and can be challenged. So, we really want to use all of the tools available to us and then measure with our pre- and our post-testing to make sure the students are gaining improvement on their knowledge of the standards by the end of the year.
Any questions for the, Mrs. King?
I just had one quick question with Ms. McMiniman. I was going to ask you, what is that Reader's Workshop model? Is that like a book, or is it, are you using books with them?
We are using books. I mean, the model is a whole philosophy of how you teach reading and reading comprehension skills. We are using the units of study, studied by Lucy Coughins that we had purchased at the beginning over the summer. And so, the teachers are receiving training through the Teaching and Learning Alliance on a monthly basis, some coaching sessions. And we had one today at the North, actually, where all the teachers were involved. And they are using classroom libraries that we were in the process of building through multiple means, so that the students are reading independently. They're reading with the teacher, whether it's a read-aloud or a guided reading group or a strategy group. And they're really building on their knowledge at their specific reading level. So, we're trying to gain their knowledge that they're reading a book that's just right for them and not too-too-high and not-too-too-easy, and really making progress at their own independent reading level.
That sounds excellent.
It's, it's, it takes some time to master it. It's a learning curve, but the teachers are really, are working their hardest to shift their mindset from a traditional model to a more student-centered model.
Perfect, that's great. Thank you so much for bringing it to us.
This is a new program that you adopted last year. And you certainly gave them incredible support for professional development and the material.
Very good, okay.
We may want to have Holly come in the spring and give a review of what, of how we're working.
That'd be wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, at the West, here's our school advisory council this year. Myself, Phyllis Green, Muriel Grevellisi, Kim Febo, and Jordi Graziano, a couple of parents that I have at the West. This is a review of our progress on our goals from last year. Again, we will look and close the gap by 3%. And if I could, when we say close the gap, just to make sure we're all on the same page, closing the gap has taken, it's the total number of students that are scoring advanced proficient that are, say, high-needs kids, and comparing that number to the total number of kids scoring advanced proficient that are non-high-needs kids. So, when we try to close the gap, we're trying to get, you know, if the 70% of the kids who are non-high-needs scoring advanced and proficient and only 40% of the kids, you know, who are high-needs scoring advanced proficient, we're trying to close that gap between those, between those two scores, okay? Because a lot of, you hear a lot of closing the gap, closing the gap. 3% can look small, but it's pretty significant because, at the same time, you're trying to increase the scores of those high-needs kids, you're also hoping that the kids who are already maybe proficient are becoming advanced. So, it's kind of moving in two directions at the same time. So, just for clarification on that. So, we had success, not quite as much as the North. Congratulations, Christine, in closing the gap. But we did, in math, in both, in both grade levels, we did close it by 3%. And in ELA, in grade five, we actually closed the gap by 3%. Grade four, we didn't, so we still have some work to do in grade four. We did pick up some strategies and skills that we actually learned in doing our math interventions this past year, working with specific students that we can kind of translate, I think, over into the ELA as well. We also used a lot of different PLC strategies during the year. We had teachers trained at the start of the year in PLCs. We did a chalk talk, which is an exercise where everybody gets to come up. I think I talked about it last year, you guys, but, you know, we all kind of chose like what the things are important to us. We narrow it down to a workable model. We decide on building norms, and we did that. We completed that exercise of having building norms and, you know, agreeing that this is how we're going to relate to each other professionally as we go along. That was very successful. And CPS pilot team, again, you're familiar with that because we spoke a few times. We really, I have to commend my team at the building that really put heart and soul into that program. And it still exists. I was asked a question earlier tonight, are we still doing CPS? And we positively are. What has become now is a tier-two and tier-three strategy that we can use for students who are unable to just, you know, with regular kind of interventions and stuff like that, you know, handle behaviors. So, the CPS program still does exist, and it still will exist. That's a summary from last year. So, the four goals for this year going forward, again, we're just working on closing that gap. We just, it's what's stopping us, quite frankly, from being a level-one school. We close that gap, and we can hit that mark, that'll get us to level one. So, we're going to continue to work on that. We've learned a lot each year in how we kind of do our interventions. You know, we've gone from kind of a broad brush stroke with a whole bunch of kids to, you know, to intervene with, to narrowing it down to maybe 10, 12, 15 kids and working very specifically with those students to target their skills that they need. And that's proven successful. We are also, again, with the reading instruction, I can repeat everything Christine just said. You know, it's the whole TLA program, it's the Reader's Workshop. Everybody's learning it. It's tough. It's a big change for the staff. It's taken a lot of professional development, but we have gotten an awful lot of support. Thank you for that, because I think without the support, we wouldn't be able to be as far as we are right now this year with the program. Let's see. Again, our staff survey for us, interesting, you know, the staff surveys, you think you know what's going on all the time, and you do a survey, and it's like, oh, okay. I don't know what's going on sometimes, you know what I mean? So, what come out of our staff survey was, was we found out that we don't all, we don't all, we don't all agree as a staff on what we think our priorities are. So, that was an interesting kind of thing to uncover, you know? And I say that because it just was one of those things where some people said, yeah, yeah, we know what's important to us here, and some people said, well, I'm not sure. So, that was worthy enough, I think, to work a goal around that, you know? So, we're using our leadership team and surveys throughout the year, you know, to articulate clearly, you know, in our school culture, what is our vision? What is our mission going forward? And then, lastly, and this is, again, this is a goal that we all have, and we've always had it up here, you know, positively affecting the social growth and development of all the students in the building. We do that in several different ways. This year, it's, you know, with the implementation of the PBIS system, which is, you know, kind of setting the ground rules for everybody. We talk about matrices of how do you behave in the calf? How do you behave at recess? How do you behave in the hallways? And, you know, and how do you recognize when students are able to do those things well? And that's, I think that's that. I'm sorry if I spoke too fast, yeah.
Any questions for the intermediate level? Thank you, folks.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to acknowledge the Wilburn Street and the North's MCAS results. And we talked, I mentioned to the principals last week that I really think that, you know, what, the beauty of the setup of how you have the one-through-threes and the four-fives is that we can work together, so they're going to graciously share their strategies with the other side of town so that we can get all schools to that level. But you have a lot of priorities on the table for the elementary teachers, a lot of new programs, a lot, a lot going on. So, my job over the next few months is going to try and prioritize some of it so that we can make sure that teachers are not feeling overwhelmed by the amount of programs. I'm just, I'm exhausted just trying to catch up on what's going on here, but I want to acknowledge all of them because they're doing an incredible job of working together. And former early childhood, Jen Mahan, was part of the Beltwell group.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Now, we have the middle school. Have you met the newest assistant principal at the middle school? Terry, I'm going to ask you to introduce our newest member. Jeanette?
Good evening. Terry Sheen, of course, we've met before. This is Jeanette Quirk, who's our new assistant principal at the middle school. Mr. Gerard was not able to be here tonight, so we're pinch-hitting the best we can. We're going to do this in tandem, and I'll take the first part from the summary from last year, because as I was here last year, I might be able to do that a little bit, and then Ms. Quirk will pick it up from there. I'd like to actually thank the members of the committee. Mr. Gerard, Ms. Barabee, Mr. Welch, Ms. Brizboi, pardon me, Ms. Dugan. It's been a long day, I apologize. Ms. Rubin and Ms. Toth, all concerned monthly and met, I think it was at the third Thursday of every month. We set some pretty aggressive goals last year. Mr. Gerard's first year in the building. One of the things we were focusing on was some of our fundamental and foundational sort of documents that we are, we're working on. We reorganized our handbook to get a little bit more of a feel for what we're aiming for with the PBIS that is coming in in the future. We are, we have a PBIS committee that has been formed, and we'll be implementing that throughout the year thoughtfully and intentionally. We revamped our program of studies and, of course, realigned some of our math curriculum, as you know, to move forward. The work continues in a lot of ways for our literacy program, the Key Three Writing Program. We were working on that on Tuesday yesterday and a lot this year with our teachers in that program. Social studies and ELA were brought around this past year. We had professional development in the building this past week, pardon me, professional development in the building, development in the building. And we did a lot of works, we're doing a lot of works, and we did a lot of work with our curriculum mapping and making sure that we're aligning to the new standards, particularly in science and in math with the new programs there. We continue to work with our tier-two and tier-three interventions. We did, we did train one academic team of teachers plus some support staff with the CPS pilot. And then, we began to, and then we designed the Student Support Center, Student Support Center that we brought back into existence this past year.
This is the council for this year, which includes my, myself, Mr. Gerard, Ms. Barabee, Ms. Jackson, Ms. Caro, and Mr. Welch's teachers. For parents, we have, excuse my pronunciation, Ms. Brizboi, Dugan, Ms. Rubin, and Ms. Toth. Our first goal is to develop our curriculum maps using the UBD Design Template. Our second goal is to analyze our academic programs while keeping the whole child, the whole student in mind. And our third goal is three-pronged, which the first part of it would be to develop a policy and procedure for math placement. The second piece is utilizing the PBIS committee to promote positive behavior. And the third piece is to help some of our troubled students by using our new Student Support Center.
Questions at the middle school level? Mrs. Burns.
I don't know how to phrase this as a
I don't know how to phrase this as a, if it's a concern or a question with regards to the culture at the middle school, which I think has always been, it's a difficult age, and you guys have one of the most difficult age brackets in adolescents. I'm continually concerned about the student culture at the middle school and what's going on. And I just, maybe it's just my time of night, and I just can't wrap my head around it. I just don't know, there's, I'd like to see a goal to really target that aggressively, whether it be the collaborative problem-solving approach that I know is just starting there. I know that everything, it takes time because it's not just a, you know, just to turn it on, but I personally would like to see a more aggressive approach targeting that student culture and how they interact with one another.
Well, I was just going to say the first step is you had approved a new position in Alice, help me out her last name.
Okay, yep.
Thank you.
Is on board and is outstanding, and she is working at the middle school level and at the high school level with helping with that exact goal of yours and all of us. And what I would, I'm going to suggest is, again, that we bring her forward in a couple of months with Mr. Gerard to talk about, the whole purpose is to work around the school culture and assist teachers.
And maybe I just didn't thought, and maybe, again, it may be that time of night.
It's not in here, but it's something that's happening. That's the other thing about school improvement plans.
But I think it affects the academic achievement of all students and...
Absolutely. There's a lot more going on in all these schools besides just this document. So, I'm glad you brought it up because I am very impressed with what I've heard has been going on down at the middle school and at the high school as far as support for these students. So, I think we'll have her come forward.
Great, thank you, I appreciate it.
And we'll share that with Mr. Gerard.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, great, thank you very much.
So, can I say we saved the best for last because she's dying up there? Linda's favorite thing to do, presentations.
I'd like to acknowledge my 2015-2016 advisory council. We had four stu-, two students, a community member, three parents, three teachers, guidance counselor, and a curriculum team leader besides myself. From our 2015-2016 plan, the goals that we had were all connected to learning with the focus on rigor and interdisciplinary opportunities. By April of last year, the teachers shared out how they have incorporated rigor into their lessons. We are going to take those ideas and create a rubric that identifies what makes a task or an assignment rigorous. We also formed, from one of our goals, an interdisciplinary steering committee that worked all of last year and into the summer on developing a plan to move toward a more interdisciplinary approach to learning. This year, we are focusing on skills as well as making connections in all subject areas. We have a subject of the month and suggestions on how each curriculum area could connect what they are doing to that subject of the month. Part of our goals last year also was to examine our schedule, in particular, our interdisciplinary block. Based on feedback from teachers at the end of last year, we did structure the block a little differently this year, and we are providing a variety of academic opportunities for students. We did ask for funding for that block, and we did receive funding, and we are working with that. We are always at this, and especially at this time, exploring other options for students during this time. We do consider it learning time, unconventional, but nevertheless, we do feel there's a lot of opportunity for learning during that time, and a large number of our students are taking advantage of those opportunities. Part of our 2015-2016 plan was also to reach out to our academically at-risk students, and we did provide an evening academic support program offered this time for about twelve weeks to students as a means to get extra help, to come in and just do homework if they needed a space for homework. And our last goal last year was to develop a three-year plan, which we wanted to use to define education at Wilmington High School as 21st century. We did complete the plan, and year one of our three-year plan is the basis of our 2016-2017 school improvement plan. So, this is our school advisory council this year has grown. We have four students participating this year and nine parents. We have a great parent support group this year, so I'm really excited about working with them. Our three-year plan has three overarching goals. Increasing student achievement by providing relevant, rigorous, and engaging learning experiences for every student in every classroom every day. Offering a comprehensive program of studies that prepares all students to be ready for college, career, and life. And to evaluate and measure progress of students in achieving proficiency and meeting our academic, social, and civic expectations. These goals really come from our mission statement at the high school, as well as, I think it reflects the strategic plan and the vision of the strategic plan. We are also preparing for a NEAS visit in 2020 to continue our accreditation. So, we did want our next three years to reflect some of the work that needs to be completed and that we need to prepare for that visit. So, those are our overarching goals for the three years. We have matched those goals to three objectives, curriculum instruction and assessment, and we chose those because they are three of the seven standards that we will be assessed on through our accreditation in 2020. Now, there are eight goals for each year. They are the same goals with just different tasks that are related to each goal that we want to accomplish. The first goal is to continue with our interdisciplinary steering committee to plan for more interdisciplinary courses and opportunities. We are going to also offer some professional development to teachers so that we can involve more teachers in the actual planning process. Our second goal is based on our work with inclusive practices, and we are focusing our leadership team, which consists of myself, the assistant principals, and the curriculum team leaders, to establish, we have established five priority strategies to be demonstrated or to be observed by all teachers to ensure a focus on inclusive practice. We have power elements from the teacher rubric that are focused on inclusive practice, and from those elements, we have looked at the five strategies, or we have actually established the five strategies that we are observing in classes and giving feedback to our teachers based on those practices. The third goal involves enhancing our program of studies, which we do on a regular basis. We will revise and we will review. We did offer some different courses this year, and we are planning to offer other courses for next year. We have an international business course that we were offering this year, and we did offer honest statistics. We did not have an enrollment for it. We are hoping that we have an enrollment next year for an AP Statistics class, and that seems to be popular. So, we are adding that to next year. Our fourth goal involves our senior internship program. This was started four or five years ago with very few students participating, and we've probably increased the number to about fifteen or sixteen that participated last year, and our goal over three years is to have 100% participation. The students that participate in the internship program have absolutely wonderful experiences. They spend the fourth quarter with, some internship, they have done nurses, they work with nurses, they've worked with teachers, they've worked with many different community members in many different areas. We are looking to increase the number of students this year, and we are looking also to change the criteria so that more students are, have the opportunity. Our criteria now is pretty, not difficult, but we do require them to have an 85% average in order to go out for the fourth quarter. We want every student to be able to go out, whether they go out for an internship or a community service project or some other alternative. But we are looking to increase that number and hopefully get to 100% in the third year of the plan. We have also formed a scheduling committee because that is also something that we want to continue to evaluate every year. We, for the most part, have liked the schedule that we have, but we do want to make some changes. We have some things that have come up that have been something that we want to maybe prioritize. We are looking at advisory. We are looking at now maybe offering some quarter or exploratory courses for students and maybe even some hybrid courses. We are looking at the interdisciplinary block again and maybe changing that a little bit over the next two years. We have conducted surveys, we will continue to do that. The surveys come from parents, from teachers, and from students, and we will use the surveys as a means to revise the schedule as we continue. We are also looking at evaluating our students on our academic expectations this year and continuing to evaluate them on our social and civic expectations over the next three years. This is something that really should have been happening sooner than this. It's something that came from our last accreditation in 2010, and I think it was just put on hold, and we had the move, and we have a turnover in staff that really needs to focus on these expectations and really work with the rubrics that go with the expectation. So, this is something we're beginning this year and hope to continue so that when we are planning for our NEAS visit, this is already in place. Our next goal involves scheduling some time for departments to meet. We do not have common planning time built into the schedule. It's a difficult schedule to work with for that. So, we are offering the W2 or interdisciplinary block time for departments to work together. They write a proposal. They ask for a particular day to work together, and the administrative team, which is myself and my two assistants, we will work with covering their classes in the cafeteria. So, we have done that several times already this year, and it really has helped to give the time to teachers to collaborate. Sometimes it's just a group of algebra teachers that might want to work on a common assessment. Sometimes it's a group of ninth-grade English teachers who have a common goal that they want to work on. And our last goal is that we are preparing to implement PBIS at the high school. It is different at that level than it is in the elementary schools, so we are working to find a way to implement. We have begun our work. We have, with teacher input, we have determined expectations for behavior at Wilmington High School for students and staff. So, we have looked at what respect looks like in the classroom, what respect looks like at meetings, what respect looks like in the cafeteria. We are asking students to also give us input, and then we will work from there to show what these expectations are. And our PBIS team will be in effect next year. And this year, we just have a pre-planning committee to work on PBIS. We are planning to use those expectations to revise our handbook as well. So, that's it.
I just want to comment on this particular plan because I feel like this is what this building was created for, and this is exactly the work that was my vision for what was going to happen in this place, and I'm so very, very excited to see and commend the high school staff and administration for a very ambitious but exciting plan.
Mrs. Kane.
On the PBIS team, are students on that, or is it just adults?
Not yet. The expectations that we're trying to develop, they have input into that. I have four committees going this year right now just with teachers, but I am planning the first of the year to get students involved in these committees as well. Handbook committee, we have a NEAS committee, the PBIS committee, and the scheduling committee, so...
And could I just say that I just really have to commend you because I was involved in this when I was teaching, and to try to get time together during, especially during the school day, the scheduling is what caused us not to be able to make as extensive a program as we wanted to when we were doing interdisciplinary work, and the program was outstanding, facing history, we had done, too. And for a principal and her two assistants to cover times for the other teachers to be able to do that is probably unheard of, and I just want to commend you. You always put the students first, you always find a way to help your staff, and I just want to say thank you. Sometimes I don't think the town realizes what wonderful, wonderful staff we have and the way that you go out of your way to help our children, and just to hear you say that you were going to cover for them, I can't tell you what it means to me. It's wonderful that you do that, so thank you.
I love being with the kids, and I miss being with them, so it's kind of fun to have them in the calf with me.
Mr. Talbot.
Question on your 1.4 with the internship program. What do you find is holding a lot of kids back from, you know, doing that program?
They have to provide the internship themselves, they have to find it themselves. So, we're trying to work towards helping them find it. That's why we'd like 100%. We know that not everybody can find it on their own, so we're looking into finding some opportunities for them as well.
And so, you work with like the local business community, and the other question I had about that was nonprofits. Are we encouraging them to, you know, work with nonprofits? I know there's a lot around this area.
I don't think that that's, I don't think I've encouraged that. I just have encouraged them to look into what they see that they might want to do in their future, just to see what it's like. They've worked in businesses, they've done, they've worked with engineers. They've worked on a lot, in a lot of different ones. I will get you a list of them.
And the school business partnership with Marlene Moran is a really good resource for us to help support the places. I mean, I think nonprofit was a great idea. That's actually where I started out working, and I did it through an internship in college.
And I just know that there's a lot of nonprofits that could need, you know, the help of just, you know, with whatever that's needed, and I know, I would like to see, you know, it come more of a requirement, you know, for graduation that they do some type of nonprofit or internship.
We do have a community service requirement for graduation. So, they do 10 hours as freshmen, 10 hours as sophomores, 15 hours as juniors, and 15 hours as seniors. So, that's their graduation requirement.
The other question, just one more. The 1.5 scheduling committee for evaluating current schedules and things like that, and again, I'm new to this, so I'm not really sure if you already have it in place, but do you have any associations with like a local community college like Middlesex, since that's the closest one, to have kids, you know, instead of, you know, providing an AP class, you know, to say, we can send you to Middlesex, and you can take a class there and get credit that you can use later on?
We have a dual enrollment program with... We have a dual enrollment program with Middlesex. We also have a virtual high school program where we have opportunities for students to take AP classes that we may not offer at the high school. So we do have that opportunity as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mrs. Peters?
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Only because it's, I'm feeling I'm in a little bit of a transition too. For some of these, I'd like, I really enjoy how this goal is written, and I think what I'm struggling with, and I may need to be guided, is with some of them, I, what type of evidentiary data will we have to see the success of these goals implement? I mean, I know that there's outcomes, but I don't know as to how to compare them, like more seniors or more students. How do, I mean, I don't know what to expect, I guess, at the end result to see how far you come with those goals, knowing that it's multi-tiered, I understand, but...
I think that's why they're three-year goals.
Okay.
Because I think that, you know, we, we, we've put in different tasks that we'd like to accomplish.
Yeah.
And I guess the measurement would be, do we accomplish all of them, and then what do we do next year? So I'd like it to be fluid.
Yeah.
I haven't even filled in, truthfully, the third year because I do feel that it's going to depend on what we get through the first and second year. And if the goal is reasonable, is it reasonable to have 100% of our students out for fourth quarter? I'd love to see that, but I don't know if that's reasonable, I don't know if that's possible. And if, I'd like to see other alternatives, but I don't know what they are yet. So I think it's fluid right now, but I do think it's measurable. I do think that there's a lot of this that's already in place.
Okay. All right. Thank you, I appreciate it very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. We appreciate all of our staff members for being here tonight.
Thank you all, giving up the night.
Thank you. There goes our public. All right, our next item of business this evening is public comment, but I think we're seeing our public walk out, so that's, that's all right. All right, next item is other reports, and under other reports, subcommittee reports. Do we have any subcommittee reports this evening? No, I think we, I think we covered everything. Great. Any correspondence, Mrs. Bonnish?
No.
All right. Future meeting dates and agenda items. We have no second meeting in November due to Thanksgiving, as has been our tradition, and also in December. Our one and only meeting in December is December 14th, as per our tradition, and that is focused budget, am I correct?
It will be the budget presentation.
The budget presentation.
We will have it.
Excellent.
Excuse me, could we just make sure either, I'm not sure if we have our student rep come to that. She didn't realize last month that we had changed the meeting, so we have to make sure she knows when they are.
I'll have Tristan.
Yeah.
Great.
There was, she thought it was one night, and we didn't have it, so.
Okay, good to know. Thank you for, thank you for bringing that up. Great. Okay, and with that, I think we can ask for a motion toward churn.
So moved.
Mrs. Kane and a second, Mrs. Burns, all those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.